Excludes transfers for providing local matching requirements for federal grant and aids as being counted towards the Governor's Transfer Authority. And also, the transfers for the 10% law enforcement increase will not be credited against the Governor's General Transfer Authority. So, on that amendment?
Uh, just a question.
Yes, Senator Uggan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Just a quick question in the applicability or application of this. Are they going to be able to, or should we insert language where in fact is delineated, is separate and apart? Because obviously, if they provide one huge lump sum transfer, let's say $1 million, of which $250,000 is matching, the intent here is to make sure that that doesn't fall into that 15% Transfer Authority.
That's correct.
Yeah, so, can I ask just the committee to perhaps communicate with them so that in fact is delineated accordingly?
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Any objections? No objections? That amendment carries. The last amendment is the, um, is an amendment that if any of the cost accounts created by this require existing automated postings within government Guam financial management system to be manually duplicated to conform the requirements of this act, then the Department of Administration may instead report the details of the cost account outside the financial management system. This basically is to ensure that they don't have to, that the work that they do on accounting for the health benefits pool is that right now, health is part of the salary line, and that's automated. And so, we're not saying enter into a program, extract that, deposit it into the pool. We're just saying you can keep that report, but you also have to account and report on a separate report, the health benefits and charging against it and paying it out. So, it just makes ensure that they don't have to incur any additional costs in reporting that health benefits pool. So, on that amendment? No objections? Amendment carries? All right, we'll just then recess while we check on the status of the bill. We're in recess. In session, um, my good colleagues, a few minutes ago, several minutes ago, several tens of minutes ago, you got the copy of the final bill? Yes, it's, uh, they've been, yeah, so we're, each of you is getting a copy as it is being printed. And, um, so we've had an opportunity to review some of this, and so we, um, we'll give a little bit more time, I guess, on the review. And then we'll, um, we have concluded the discussion on the bill, and of course, we're in the final review, but we haven't risen, so there's opportunities to continue to make statements and, uh, and any technical adjustments or adjustments that anyone may catch that may be required. We'll be happy to clarify any other questions you have with regards to what's contained in the bill. One of the things that you will notice is that we did, um, separating the tables, you will see the object class, the general fund, the special fund, and then the total. So, that total amount equals, unless otherwise noted, equals the total amount that you saw in Bill 58. But we just broke out the special fund as was requested. And they're broken out by the line item and the object class categories. There was one, um, change that was noted already. Um, was that Speaker Wampad or Senator Uggan? Was that? Page nine? That's correct. Yes. Right. Yes. Line eight total should equal the line 19 total. So, it is the line eight total that should be, uh, down in line 19. Senator Campbell.
Yep. Thank you, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I'm just, again, I'm just going through the bill, and the earlier pages, I noted on page two, on lines 10 and 11, you have the, in the, in the general fund revenues, you have total general fund revenue available for operations at $545,301,145.
That's correct.
And then, uh, and then on page three.
Right.
Line 14 and 15, general, total general fund revenue available for appropriation,
Yes.
Is there, I'm, I'm just trying to get a clarification on that?
Yes, as we explained, uh, in, I think it was the first day of session, it's the core tech tax credit. We, we netted that out because that was a, uh, an appropriation that we allowed them to take the tax credit for the payment of T-Gen for the rent. We allowed them to take that out as a tax credit in FY 2010.
Right off the top?
Yeah, so that's the reduction in that. Thank you very much, Senator.
Mr. Chair, I think some, some of the colleagues still do not have an engrossed bill.
They don't? Oh, I'm sorry. There's one right next to you. Oh, she's here. Okay. Can we check on Sergeant Arms? Yes. Senator Palacios?
Uh, sir, uh, thank you. Uh, it's been brought to my attention by the, when, when this body passed the, I guess, the appropriation bill authorizing for the compact impact, and along with that is the hiring of, I guess, a specialty, they, I think they have hired already the attorney on the, on the contract.
Right.
Not, not as independent contractor, but pursuant to provision of that particular bill itself.
The appropriation.
Yes, so, on page 49, I don't know how then C will impact, page 149C. 149, yeah, page 149C, I don't know how that would impact now with the incumbent, uh, contract employee. That perhaps maybe, uh, some notation can be made under the D, under the D subtitle. That was, that was a concern brought to my attention this morning.
But wouldn't that be covered under C? Because the...
Yeah, yeah, oh, but C, when, when, when we pass that bill authorization bill, it also provides that for that particular attorney.
Right.
Can be hired, not as, not as an independent contractor, but as a contract employee to do that. So actually, that person is an employee of the Attorney General on a contractual basis, as opposed to being a contracted, independent contractor.
Okay. Let me, um, maybe just ask the legal counsel.
If we check back that, that appropriation bill, otherwise, under the current proposal.
Yes, I understand.
They will be out.
Why don't I ask the, uh, legal counsel to, uh, discuss that concern with you?
I don't, wait, wait. No, no, to, I think the provision is to...
Okay. Okay. Did the legal counsel respond to your question?
I, I, I guess, Senator, uh... Yeah, I, I, yeah.
Yeah. I think that, um, if there's an existing contract, there's an authorization to carry forward.
It will not be affected by this provision.
Yeah, I don't think it'll be affected by this. And, you know, we can come back if it is.
Yes, sir.
Because it's not a matter of funding and, and...
It's not a matter of funding, sir.
So, we could, we could resolve that issue, um, you know, in terms of maybe in some other fashion, rather than, than trying to carve it out today. But there is an existing contract, the authorization to fund that contract's there, and I don't, as, as Senator Rector mentioned, we probably could not impair that existing contract.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Maybe something more clear before we actually, we're not going to vote on this right now.
Yes.
All right, okay. Okay, that's all right. Thank you.
Actually, it's $6,000. I want to, I want to note that after all of the additions, all of the amendments, all of the deletions, that this budget is not balanced. There is a surplus in the general fund of $6,168, which we did not appropriate, and... We will make that a technical amendment and give that to DOE. Yes, we're still in committee of the whole. And... But... Yes. So is that contractual or DOE? Yes, right? And, uh, the gen, the special funds had an underappropriation after appropriating of $28,199. $32,285 of that was in the gone contractors license revenue. Uh, $3,0052 was in the territorial highway fund. There was an overappropriation, which we noted when the motion was passed, in the TAF of $2,636, and an overappropriation of $4,503, $4,503 in Dutchamor Landres. Before transmittal? Yes. Yes, Senator Tydeaway?
Hi, is this the, the point, uh, the part of the session where we can actually question and answer about the bills?
Sure, sure.
Okay. Uh, page 163? Section 8?
Yes.
Okay. A, as I'm reading this, Mr. Chair, um, this gives the, um, Governor the authority to transfer to the general fund any cash available from the appropriated special fund or revolving funds, uh, to the appropriations authorized by this act.
Right.
Uh, does this mean that he, he can actually transfer something that we've already appropriated? Or is this stating that he cannot, uh, touch funds from the special fund that's already been appropriated? Or can he just pull that money out of special funds and put it somewhere else for, as a transfer authority? Because as I, as I see it, the special funds and revolving funds have already been designated for the certain agencies to use, correct?
That's, that's correct. This was, uh, we did not change that at all in our discussion.
Okay.
And so, this is, this provision did not change. There was no amendment made to this. What this means basically, uh, which we, um, is that the Governor may borrow the cash in these accounts, but he has to return them. When, uh, if he should need cash to fund the appropriations, uh, made in this act, and the cash is not there in the general fund, he may borrow the cash from the special and revolving funds, and then when the cash is collected in the general fund, he has to return it back to the special fund or the revolving fund. And this is a carryover provision from previous budgets.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that's my next question. I, is there a certain timeline or, or based, is there priority when the cash is, uh, put back into the, um, the general fund, uh, from where, or the, when the cash does come in, that he has its priority, that the money that he did take from the special fund go back into that, uh, area that was appropriated from that special fund?
It's mandatory that he does so.
Okay, and it does date here, right?
He returns the cash to the fund he took it from.
Uh, it's mandatory as soon as the money is, is in the account? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the clarification.
We had it last year.
Speaker, Ben Panglinen, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, um, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, um, the body, I want to just, uh, before we close, uh, discussion on the bill, just want to thank each and every member of this body. I think that, uh, this has been, uh, for me, a very pleasant, I might say, experience in terms of dealing with this budget. The collegiality and professionalism exhibited by all members of this body and all my colleagues on both sides of the aisle has been unprecedented. And, um, as such, I think we have seen a budget that reflects the needs of the departments and agencies, a revenue projection that is realistic and supportable and agreed to by other independent, uh, entities that reviewed this, the Special Economic Service Group, the Special Accounting Service Group, uh, of course, the Office of Management and Budget, BBMR. Uh, all of these, uh, outside entities reviewed the budget and the revenue projections and, and certainly, uh, have, um, indicated that the 540 revenue is, is very much achievable in the next fiscal year. I think the contributions made by all of my colleagues, uh, have added to the clarity and the resources and the deployment of those resources to the needed agencies and departments of the Government of Guam. The budget, of course, provides more money for education, more money for public health, more money for public safety, more money for medicine, fully funds the food and nutrition program of the Department of Education. If we have the same crisis, uh, in the food and nutrition program as a result of the appropriation levels provided in this, um, bill next year, I will buy everybody here lunch and maybe even the kids. But I am very confident in the fact that we were, we went through the Department of Education, uh, the, uh, and, and worked with them on what exactly is their true cost and provided that here. The mayors, who are the front line, uh, we, we sat down with them, and we had the perennial streetlight problem, and we went through, uh, the streetlights with them, uh, we went through the billing of the streetlights with, um, with, uh, GPA. They basically agreed to our projection in here and the acceptance of this body, so there should be no reason for, uh, the streets of Guam going dark next year because we haven't paid our streetlight bill. And again, all of the resources that we're providing is predicated on the fact that the revenue levels and the adopted revenue levels are realistic and achievable, uh, by this government in the next fiscal year. And so, given all of that, Madam Speaker, I would like, I mean, Madam Chair, I move that the committee of the whole rise on the matter of Bill 58 as, um... On the matter of Bill 58, as substituted by the Committee on Appropriations, Taxation, Banking, Insurance, Retirement and Land, and as amended in the Committee of the Whole, that we rise and report back to the committee with the recommendation to, to, uh, pass Bill Number 58-30COR, as substituted by the committee and amended in the Committee of the Whole with the recommendation to do pass, so...
On that motion, if there are any objections? No objection. Motion carries. Senator Respe, Senator Respecher, you're recognized then.
Thank you very much, um, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, as we just heard from the Chairman of the Committee on Appropriations, uh, the Committee of the Whole has risen pursuant to a motion he made, uh, there was no objections. And so now, Bill Number 58-30 is, um, in the second reading file, and I have the honor and privilege as majority leader to move this bill to the voting file.
On the motion then, without any objections?
Okay.
So ordered. Going to ask the clerk then to, um, please read then Bill 58-30COR. Sergeant at Arms, can you please call all the senators in?
Bill Number 58-30COR, as substituted by the Committee on Appropriations, Taxation, Banking, Insurance, Retirement and Land, and... Banking, Insurance, Retirement and Land, and amended in the Committee of the Whole, introduced by Committee on Appropriations, Taxation, Banking, Insurance, Retirement and Land by request of Imaga Lai in Guahan, the Governor of Guam, in accordance with the Organic Act of Guam. An act making appropriations for the operation of the executive legislative and judicial branches of the government of Guam for fiscal year ending September 30, 2010, making other appropriations and establishing miscellaneous and administrative provisions.
Roll call. Senator Ada?
Yes.
Senator Ogun?
Ogun.
Senator Blas? Senator Calvo?
No.
Senator Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Espadon?
No.
Senator Guthers?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Ogun.
Senator Palacios?
Aye.
Senator Pangolinan?
Aye.
Senator Rector? Senator Respecho?
Aye.
Senator Tidaway?
Yes.
Senator Tinorio?
Aye.
Speaker Wampud?
Yes.
Senator Blas?
No.
Senator Rector?
No.
Substitute Bill Number 58COR received 10 yeas, 5 knees. Substitute Bill Number 58COR is duly passed by this body. That completes then the only bill that's on the agenda. I'd like to recognize the majority leader, Senator Respecho.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, before I call on a motion to adjourn subject called the speaker, I want to, for the record, I know all of you will agree when I say that we should express a undangdung sedus mase to Senator Pangolinan, to staff in the Office of Finance and Budget, and the, yeah, for their, for their work in this regard, as well as our clerk, and the legal counsel, and the central staff. What I'm very pleased about, Madam Speaker, is, you know, we have a very thick document before us, and when you look at that document, you must recognize, and I know you do, we all do, the amount of man-hours and the brain power that's gone into producing such a, such a document that would outline the priorities for the upcoming fiscal year. I want to also thank Senator Pangolinan for his leadership in meeting the new statutory requirement to have this bill passed by August 31st, and I want to say how happy we all are that we met that requirement. He's right, this budget process is unlike any other budget process we've experienced. The revenue projections were developed methodically through the Special Accounting Service, the Special Economic Services Group. It's the mid-level technical bureaucrats that worked with OFB, worked with Senator Pangolinan to adopt these revenue projections before they've gone to the legislature. So we're all very comfortable, these, those of us who voted for this bill and this $540 million spending plan. And so with that, and with the opportunity to thank everybody for their work on this product, I move then that we adjourn subject to call the speaker.
On that motion then, so this legislature is adjourned subject to the call of the speaker.